Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order at 5:35. And we're gonna go to public comment. And we only have one member of the public here, so we'll keep that open for 30 minutes. But I'd like to actually skip forward to the, in the agenda and go to new business. And Mr. Pete Durbin is here, our school district moderator. So if you could do your presentation, or if you have any questions for us?
I don't really have a notebook that I'm using. No real questions, I just wanna make sure that we're all set for the meeting, right? Does that, do we have everything that we need? What do we need? You know, is it just one valid item?
Yes.
I think so, yeah.
That's gonna be determined tonight, because there'll be one warrant article for the main school budget, and then it'll be up to the board whether we want to add on additional warrants to add to our trust funds from fund balance. So that will be determined tonight.
Okay. So then maybe two, like, yes. The fund balance, that's one into the budget right now.
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, I guess we could have that discussion right now. I've looked at those balances earlier today, and I didn't see that we would need to, unless, you're Michelle, you're thinking specifically the retirement?
No, actually, I was thinking your maintenance. Pretty much, over the last two or three years, you've been drawing out of some kind of trust fund or not, or other, to handle some kind of school maintenance item. So I didn't know if you wanted to, you know, slowly, for, you know, small amounts every year, try to build up your, your maintenance amount. And then maybe not this year, but I was telling Brandon, you do have a retirement trust fund. You have $25,000 to $26,000 in it right now, but if you had a cluster of three or four teachers retire in the same year, that could be a substantial amount of money that you would then have to put into a single budget, and you'd see a massive leap in, in what you're asking for. So, you know, sometimes we'll like to put it, let's do $5,000 a year and slowly build it, but without being a big drain on the taxpayer on the other side.
Right.
So those are the types of things to think about.
And I think that we're in a potentially pretty good position maintenance-wise, Brandon, sort of looking at kind of a longer, more longer term, I'd say, the next couple of years, right? In terms of major projects.
I mean, I, yes. I think we're in a good spot, but again, we didn't expect the $16,000 for the heating unit to go. So I think that's really what you're driving at, is all these unexpected costs that we haven't budgeted for.
Yeah, like if the freezer goes, or, you know, something goes in the kitchen, or, you know, things like that.
When you say that a retirement trust fund, what does that specifically use or mentor use for?
It's specifically used for our retirements within the school.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I just had a question on the retirement trust. Do you have a projected cost, say, a teacher of 30 years retires? Like, what does that cost look like for a 30-year retiree on that retirement trust?
So if you actually look at provision for retirement line, this is one teacher retiring, and it's costing the district approximately $35,000. So if you had two or three, you know, that's, that's when it becomes...
And what goes into that package, Michelle? Like, the $35,000 covers health insur- like, they don't stay on health insurance, right?
No, that is strictly, in the CBA, I'd have to look, everyone is a little bit different. I wanna say they get a certain amount of their sick days paid out at per diem, their current per diem when they retire. And then there's also a dollar amount per year of service. So you, you calculate that, and then it's also the fight during their retirement cost to the district for paying that. So, you know, depending upon the, the teacher at the time, and where they are on the pay schedule and stuff like that, you could be looking anywhere from 25 to 35-ish thousand dollars.
Right, because they're getting paid out per diem for the, is there a specific, there's a specific amount of sick days that they can...
Correct.
Right, it's not all their sick days?
No.
They can only go up to a certain amount?
No, it's a specific, it's a specific...
Yeah, that's what I thought.
And is that retirement trust, is that something that's continuously, like, on a year-by-year basis, built up, or what funds the retirement trust?
So, so that's a, it's a separate fund, it's a standalone fund. Three or four years ago, time kind of gets past me, we had originally had a large trust fund for the renovation, okay, build up of the school. And so what we did is we closed that, and we took those funds, gave some back to the town, the taxpayers, and we put some in the maintenance, some in the special ed, and created this retirement trust fund.
So, how much money is budgeted every year for retirement in the regular budget?
It depends on need, so...
Okay, so like, how much do we have projected? I know you gave me a number, I just couldn't find it on my list.
Yeah, so if you look at, so if you look at, it's about, it's the fourth line down. So this year, we have nothing, because we're not expecting anyone to retire next year.
In the spring.
In the fiscal '26.
Wait, what page are you on?
I'm on, you're page one.
Provision for retirement, sorry, I thought it was, I thought it was part of...
So for '26, we have a dollar. We don't expect anybody, or we have not received information of anybody.
Okay.
But for this current budget that we're in, this year that we're in, we have the $35,000. So we've been budgeting as needed, once we get notification.
Okay. I think the thing that shures us up, too, is that we, they do have to let us know a whole school year in advance, right? So we do have that extra time.
With the new, excuse me, with the new contract, it's October of the school year.
With a new contract, it's October of the school year. Okay, alright.
So it already would have to be in the budget for us to be able to plan for it?
Okay, so that is a change I didn't realize.
Mm-hmm. So, so knowing that 35 is probably the cap, but that would be from possibly one teacher.
Right.
I mean, we're in a situation where we don't foresee that here at this particular school. I, I do think the, the thought process of building small capacity over long periods of time for both the maintenance and retirement, because we, we can't burden the taxpayers anymore with some, with a large blow. It just, it, this last, last two years have been hard pills to swallow, I think.
And you, and you don't have to jump into doing everything this year, you can pick one and just say, hey, we've had problems in the building, let's, let's put up to $10,000 into the maintenance trust, and just leave it at that. And then, you know, you can process and think about what you wanna do in following years.
Right, because that still leaves 25 grand, give or take, in the retirement trust, right?
There's 35 right now.
35, so we took 10.
There's 25, there's 26 in the, in your retirement trust fund right now.
Right now.
26, okay.
And we are not pulling any?
Correct, we're not pulling any right now.
Okay.
So, and I think, I think generally, we're a ways out from any more teachers retiring, most likely.
Most likely, yeah.
Yeah, so I think we're good there. And then the school maintenance, you know, we do have 127,000, and I do think that is a good amount. I don't know what you think as far as that's your area in your real house, but as far as like, if a boiler grows down, you know, maybe that's 80 grand, like, we still have...
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't defer to Brandon on this one, but I, I think he has a better understanding than me. Obviously, I'm up to speed on what we've invested in, and what we've had to sort of, you know, for surprise expenses this year. But it seems like, hopefully, we don't see anything like, you know, a significant, unexpected expense in the coming year, at least. So I do think we're, we're in a good spot, we can group through there.
Yeah, I feel like, you know, we keep investing in upkeep, and we're really good about that, so I feel like we should be pretty good.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then the other would be the special education, which has 301,836. And we have the Sargent Fund Expendable Trust, which is 192,477. These are, yeah, accurate as of today? Yep, these numbers. Or the trust is gonna go down?
Depending upon what we need to use this year. So you've, you've allocated, what, 60,000?
60.
So that's not on here.
Right, it's not part of that.
Okay, so at 132.
The 60's not part of the Sargent?
No. Not the balances that she's working with, right?
Yeah, so we're 132.
Because we haven't made a decision yet to take out yet.
Uh, no, it's 132 with the 60 gone.
Okay, with the 60, okay.
Yeah. So, I think we're in really good shape with these numbers. With the numbers that are in the trust, that we wouldn't need to ask for more this year. But I don't know what you guys think, I mean, just all things considered.
I, I feel like we have taken care of some of the most outstanding, like, maintenance-wise things that have come up. We have completely handled and taken care of and addressed, and...
Or, or is happening in the spring.
It is, right.
It's not our conversation.
Yeah, yeah, yep. And, and so, again, I guess where I land is, I, I feel strongly that we have to do well by the taxpayers. There's been, we've been vote, since I've been on term, twice it's been passed, and both those times have been big, big budgets to support the school. I think it's, it's in our best interest to, you know, try to not have...
Yeah.
So, I like the incremental a lot. I think if, if we've managed the last two years under this, under the budget with the money that we've had, with the trust fund and the regular budget, I, I think we're in good shape.
Yeah, I agree with that. Sure.
And then moving forward, Michelle, we could, like, next year during budget, we could say, okay, we're gonna add, based upon what, what we've used or not used. It rolls over, right? Will maintenance roll over? Like, if we don't use the maintenance?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
So, say, say we go scot-free. We get that plus the next round of money coming in?
Mm-hmm.
Right, okay.
Mm-hmm. Yep. So Peter, I think that we would obviously update you of any changes as far as those warrant articles, but there's definitely gonna be the one warrant article for the budget. And then the other question I had for you...
What's on, sorry, what's on the back here?
So that was, that's a sample that we were providing to the board and the public today, so that if they wanted the additional warrant articles to add to the trust, that would have been those bottom two. So, so for right now, it sounds like we'll be staying with just a single warrant.
Okay, alright, so that...
Well, can we talk about special ed for a second?
Yeah.
Because we didn't talk about special ed. And I have, I have some large concerns, since the state has come down and said that special ed will not be funded. And correct me if I'm not interpreting this correctly, but it sounds like that the state is deciding to cut a lot of the special ed funding based upon certain criteria that they're deeming to be not worthy of, of spending the money on. Am I in that correct somewhere, Brandon?
Yeah.
So, I do wanna be cautious about not putting us behind versus in having to scrape our way out of something. The kiddos who are on IEPs and 504s right now for us, and we've talked about this in the past, we do have a higher number percentage of IEPs and 504s at East Kingston, for whatever reason. We can screen our kids, we have the ability to help our kids in a, in a more one-on-one setting, and we have two special ed teachers. But when kids go per pupil in special ed, it's pretty high. It's a high number, and I don't wanna put us in a situation that makes us have to defund anything here. When we look at all the numbers that Brandon showed us last, last meeting, our kids are moving, and, but there are still four, five, six kids in that red that need our attention. And, and I just don't want to have to be scraping for anything, or asking for something that we can be proactive in, if it's incremental. So, I, I just wanted to kind of put that out there for everyone to think about.
Yeah, I think we're like mixing budget and new business with Pete here, our moderator. But one thing that I'd like to point out to your point, Kirsten, is that in FY '25, we're at 410,724, and FY '26, we're at 586,797 budgeted. So that's an increase of 176,000, it's an increase of 42.87%. And I believe that you were gonna present the information regarding the email from Renee Bennett? Were you gonna present that?
Very briefly, we just included that in your pack, so that you could see what was coming from the state, and then the response information that...
So to answer Pete's question, it is a warrant article that came to us on the sheet, and so if it's going to be presented to the public, I just think we need to make sure that either we're gonna add money to the trust fund, or not. And if we're feeling, or Brandon, you know the numbers better than all, like, that 176,000 is for the current, because we have incoming kindergarteners who are gonna need IEPs and 504s?
So, so let me just say, this is, this is done by function, just to give you an idea of what the changes are within function. So that 176,000 is a little misleading, because that, it includes, if you look down at the speech, the psych, speech, OT, and PT, there's a, there's a decrease of 77,000. That's because we moved it to a special ed line. So, so it's a little misleading that the whole change is 176, okay? And also, within that 176, you see a decrease in regular education.
Yep.
We, because of need, we moved, we removed one regular ed special aid, and added it to a special. So, so it's kind of a mix, and it's, so it's not a true increase of 176,000.
Alright, so again, I guess my point is, knowing that the funding is not going to come in from the state potentially, are we in a situation where we wanna be somewhat proactive on this budget, so that upcoming, the following year and the following year, there's something to work with? If, Brandon, and, and I, I say this because, right, like, you deal with it on a daily basis, if you feel we're okay for next year, I just don't wanna be, I don't wanna have to say to the public and say to the taxpayers, we're 10, 15, 20, 30 grand behind, because we didn't get the state funding that we needed, and now we have to add it to the budget. Just like we were saying, the incremental stages of the maintenance fund or the retirement fund, is it worth it for us to have a small piggy bank for special ed? Because we're not gonna receive the funding.
Is there anything in the trust now? Is it just zero, and you need to fund it?
So we have $300,000 in the trust, and so the thing that I would like to point out is...
There's a special ed trust, right?
Yep, and so the thing that, we are projecting the needs, Brandon, the finance office, to make sure that we're secure in what we need, and I think we do a really good job budgeting for what we need and providing, you know, for the kiddos that we have. And in Renee's email, she gave really good information as far as like, the changes that would add to the costs. For an example, in the state of New Hampshire, we're not required to provide services up to the age of 22, so we're adding a whole entire year of services that, you know, a house bill passed, and then we're taking that on, so there's changes there. And Frank Edelbrooke sent an email to everyone for budgetary purposes from the state of New Hampshire, and he is talking about the amount, the current appropriation for special education. He is giving us the numbers, so that we can project into the future. And I think the state is aware that we're gonna fall short, and I think across the board, the numbers that are in this report, that I think Michelle is gonna touch base on, are staggering as far as the needs of the students.
So, so to answer Pete's question, it is on here. If we, choosing not to do anything this year, I just, then it will go away. However, I, I don't wanna ignore that, if we're talking about the maintenance and the retirements, what I don't wanna ignore is the kids who need, who need the funding.
The, the students that are currently in our building, or that we are expecting here next year, we have budgeted accordingly.
Okay.
The, the challenges that we face, that we're facing now, and I'm saying now as, as in how we do public school in New Hampshire now, we are also responsible for any students that go to public charter schools, public charter schools, and have IEPs as the homeschool, we are responsible for providing services to those children, either contracting out with agencies, or sending staff over.
Over.
We don't have the capabilities to send staff right now over to any schools, if we did have students that require specialized services, but that's not, I'm not gonna say that's never going to happen. So, when you're asking me, you know, about the future, that there may be a time where we have to contract out with staff for, for a child that does not go here, but we are responsible for, because they are in a public charter. In addition to, there are more, and I wish Renee could see her talk about it, because she knows a lot more than I do, but there are more preschoolers across the country who require specialized services than ever in, in history. So, those are the students that we know of now, but once they turn three, we are responsible for their education if they require specialized services. So we don't know all the two-year-olds right now, who are turning three in the, in the next year, that we would be responsible for. So those are, those are where we always kind of struggle when we're, when we're having these conversations with the business office and, you know, the SAU about, about kind of what we're putting in our preschool line, because we just never know.
And that's what I'm saying, I'd rather be in the proactive space than the reactive space with that. But, again, we're good for this year. What I don't want is to have to say, year after year, there's a surprise for the taxpayers. And so, again, incremental and having that piggy bank seems more reasonable to me than saying we need 50 grand, because we didn't know something was happening, that's all. But for this year, we don't, doesn't sound like we need it.
Yeah, no. And this, this email that Renee sent out had a lot of really good information in it, on understanding the costs, the rising cost of special education. And I was gonna wait till next month to just see, maybe that we could get this put up on our website, because I just think, like, the parents need to see these, these numbers, especially with like, the mental health, things with COVID, and I just think there's a lot of important information in here, that's all statistical.
Okay.
So, to answer your question, it will just be one article?
Yeah, and, and the reason I ask is just timing, in part, right? It sounds like we won't, you know, fingers crossed, we won't need a date to kind of postpone, because we need to, we have a hard stop at 10, we're going eight to 10. So I'm just asking for that reason. In terms of the supervisor of the checklist, has anybody reached out to the supervisor of the checklist? I can, I can do that, and just make sure they're set for 8 o'clock, I think.
What is the name of the supervisor of the checklist? Is that Gisela, or, I'm not sure.
It might be.
Okay.
I always go to...
Sherry.
Barbara, yeah.
Yeah. Maybe it might be Gisela Lloyd, I think could be supervisor of the checklist.
I can, I may have her email address, I'll at least go up to Barbara and confirm. But just make sure that they can be there at 8 o'clock. Police, you know, I don't know if you discussed whether you want police at the meeting or not. In the past, the body has gone towards not having police there, because it might, it might ignite tensions, potentially just having that presence, and maybe not having them is more conducive to a civil discourse. But if something does happen, you want police there. I think it is a cost, it's been a cost in the past, that comes out of the, would be like, the administrative budget out of this. It's been 200, 400 dollars, something like that.
I, I'm completely fine without police detail. I think that's what we've done in the past, and I don't see a reason to have it, but what do you guys think?
It's my first experience with...
Yeah, I've been to one.
Yeah, I mean, I've never...
Maybe two, maybe I went to the first one, the first year I was here, and I, the discourse has been civil enough, civil enough. I'm fine with not having it, and we'll make sure somebody shows up if they need to be there.
Any, any comments? Good with that?
No, I mean, I think the only, the only thing I would think police would need to be there for is just sort of traffic control, but again, I don't know how many people go, I don't know how...
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
It's okay.
Okay.
And then Pete, do we have a snow day? Like, do we cancel ever for bad weather, or we just go with it?
We haven't since I've been here. We had, last year, we had it without heat.
Right?
It was awful.
I mean, we're on the Seacoast, so I'm thinking our snow kind of melts. I think we should be good, right? With snow. I mean, even if we get like, six inches, we'd still proceed.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I think we go, we go. Whoever comes, comes. And, you know, when we had voting two years ago, it was that massive storm, and we still had voting, so I would use that as my kind of baseline. I think we go regardless.
Okay.
Okay. Counsel's gonna be there, right?
Yep.
You know, if you have presentations in IT, you're gonna have IT set up, right? Recording, screen, if anybody wants to give a presentation.
Yeah.
You know, if you guys wanna do a PowerPoint explaining the budget and stuff like that, you'll have that there.
So Pete, I'll do the presentation on behalf of the board. The only thing that I think might be conflicting is the, the warrant articles. After my presentation is over, I'm handing off to you, and then you'll proceed with the rest of your...
Yeah, just open the warrant articles for comment and everything.
Okay.
Yeah.
We can put the warrant articles up on the, up on the screen, so people can read it.
Yeah.
Yeah, but once the warrant article is up, Pete will take over.
Yeah, but you guys have, you know, basically, you guys can have the meeting first to do the presentation, and say whatever you wanna say. And then, yeah, the warrant article will go up, and we'll start the process there.
Okay.
Hopefully, a quick process. One thing to note this year is, like, I may make a disclaimer, I don't know what your thoughts are, but Jen, my wife, is working at the school now. And so, that's a conflict of interest for me, right? When it comes to the budget. So I'll probably make a disclaimer to that effect, just saying, so everyone's aware, my wife works at the school as a paraprofessional. I'm aware of the conflict of interest, and I invite anybody to speak up if they think that I'm violating the town's trust in any way in how I conduct the meeting.
Have you looked into that, Pete? Just out of curiosity?
I don't know.
I don't see an issue? I don't, yeah?
So Bishop Bob McGrelle's wife works here, he was a...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
You should be fine. I, I'm fine.
Well, I don't want someone to say, his wife works for the school, and he tilted the meeting towards the budget, or something like that, so...
Yeah, no, I think you're very diplomatic, and you do a good job.
Yeah, I do, too.
And so, yeah, I think you do a good job with it, so...
You, you could always invite somebody else to come up and do the job, if they're gonna have something to say about it.
I didn't run for this position.
But people vote you in!
Yeah, yeah.
You're very good at it.
You know, that's the thing about a small town, it takes a couple votes.
I'm sure people appreciate you doing it, so, yeah.
Alright, I think that's it. Is there anything anybody else can think of? Oh, does someone need to take minutes?
I'll end up, well, it depends on the board, because apparently, the school clerk has resigned.
Yes.
So I have offered, as I did last year, to, to become the school clerk and take care of those duties, if they would like.
Yes, so that...
Because I gotta be there anyway, so...
So now we're moving on to old business, so, so we're moving on to old business. Our school district clerk, Peter Calandra, had to resign due to family needs, and that will make him unable to fulfill his role. So, with regret, we accepted that, and he was really looking forward to it, but it's not gonna work out. And so we, the board, can nominate someone to be the school district clerk, so I'll make a motion to nominate Michelle Larson as school district clerk. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Done. There you go, you wish. We're just getting stuff done, now you know.
Do you need anything for me to, to do that, to conduct the minutes, or you've done it in the past?
I think I'll be all set, and I believe we'll be recording it, too.
Yes.
So if I don't catch something, I work at the district, so I can check the recording if I miss anything.
Yeah.
But thanks.
Yep.
Alright, well, thank you so much, Peter.
I think that's it. Is there anything else?
Thank you very much.
On the snow day, do you wanna, is there a day, just in case, that we can have in the back of our head, in case there's some massive event that day, and we need to send out the notice?
I, well, we have to have it, I, I don't know where we are as far as the legalities of the timeline that the state allows us to be able to have the meeting, because I think it's like a five-day window, so I think we would probably plan to have it on Sunday.
Tuesday or Sunday, yeah.
I would think we'd have to do it Sunday.
Okay.
Because I don't know, generally speaking, right, the district, school district, we Because I don't know, generally speaking, right, the district, school district, we try to get at the beginning of the window in case of inclement weather. But I don't know depending on how it all plays out, where everybody is scheduled, so I'd say probably Sunday.
Okay.
At eight AM.
And notice requirement, I think, is the one other thing. In the past, we've done notices at Jones, at the library, and I think at the post office and maybe the town hall.
Yep. So we handle all the postings and that.
You're doing that?
Yep.
Okay.
We take care of that for you.
All right, all right. Then I will leave you guys alone.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks, Pete. You wanna go help a basketball?
I own us a dance tonight. She has to miss it.
Oh, that's right, Monday, yes.
But, um.
That's all right.
Yeah, you guys are doing a great job.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Take care. Okay, so we're gonna move on to business financials and first on that list, we have the state special ed update.
Okay, so like I said, that was included in your board pack for you to review. I think Renee will go into a lot more detail when she, um, comes to next month's meeting. But you did see the, the letter from Commissioner Albrook and basically saying that the state allocates a certain amount of funds and that allocation has not changed. So as more and more requests for reimbursement are turned in, percentages that are going back to the districts is lower and lower. So, and the other, the other memorandum that she sent to you is detailing the increase in student need and the students who require IEP and other services. So, kind of a notification and letting you know what's happening at the state level.
Does it have any questions? Okay, and so we'll move on to financials, current financials.
So current financials, um, in your board pack. So you will see that this month, last month, we had remaining budget of a hundred and forty-six, two hundred and forty-five. And we spent an additional sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars this month. With the majority being the facility projects that we have already discussed in previous, you know, meetings. And also some additional special ed services that were needed. So right now, we know that, um, we should be getting some monies back from grants. The Sum and Safety Grant items. So we're projecting, um, a, a remaining expense of ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars. So does anyone have any questions on those?
We have that. I'm just, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
We have ninety-eight thousand dollars.
We will, once we get the reimbursement.
We will, once we get the reimbursement.
Once we get the reimbursement from the grant.
So we're in the black.
Yep.
Make sure I understand how to read money.
Now, how do the reimbursements work exactly? Like what can we get reimbursed for versus what we can't?
As far as which?
As far, just as far as any expenses that we are getting reimbursed for from, how does that, how does that work? Cause.
Are we talking the stuff that we've purchased for here? Are you talking special ed? I'm not sure.
I, well, I think just, yeah, maybe trust stuff, yeah.
So trust stuff, so, so we have the sixty thousand dollars that you guys are up to.
Yeah.
That you had approved, so we're kind of holding off to wait to see whether we have remaining budget and can just kind of slide it into the current budget.
Okay.
So typically, we wait until about March unless something happens and we start eating up our, the budget that we do have. And then we'll say, okay, do you want to take this project, the fence project, do you want to request that from the trust now?
Okay.
And get, bring that money back in.
Okay, so it's being reimbursed.
It's kind of just a watch and see right now?
Yeah, okay, got it.
And then the reasons are for the Sergeant Trust, Expendable Trust, reasons to be able to use that one are a little broad, but definitely safety is one of the reasons. For that one.
Yeah, but, but the safety stuff is natural safety grant that we'll be getting it back from that Richard done for you, correct?
Uh, the, um, the radios and the cameras were safety grant.
Correct.
This, the other items we discussed, um, and, uh, based on the home security audit.
Yeah.
Are still considered safe, but that's coming out of.
But those are trusts, right. So it's kind of a blend of two different things.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so if you have no other questions on the current financials, we'll move on to the FY twenty-six draft budget.
Okay, so you see before you, we had provided you with, um, a copy of the budget in the last meeting. This is almost exactly the same. There were two, there are two lines that had very small changes to them. We found a typo in one line that had an extra zero in it. So we, we brought that down to where it was supposed to be and there was twenty-five hundred dollars in that line instead of two hundred and fifty. But at the same time, we received, um, information that the first student contract, we had had a three-year contract with them. And fiscal twenty-six next year, um, was part of a two-year extension with, um, a three percent increase if both parties agreed, and they did not agree. So there is a small, we took that typo and we put it into the transportation line to cover the added increase that they requested. So, so the percentage is the same, the bottom dollar is the same, it's just there's literally a switch between two lines.
So the new negotiated rate is not three percent, what did it end up at?
Six point eight.
Wow.
Wow.
So it went to three to six point eight and this is, um, for, for students?
For first student. But the small typo amount that we had to move, two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, was enough for us to add to that transportation line. You won't see a six percent increase showing because the number of actual school days when we need a bus has decreased. So we were able to take those days savings and include it and to make everything what we needed for next year.
Wow. I mean, I have seen improvements as far as for students, like being accommodating. There's a late bus now coming from the middle school.
Yep.
So, uh, that has been nice. I've heard from, from families in East Kingston that they're utilizing that.
So East Kingston kids can stay for after-school, uh, activities and sports and different things? And then they, there's one bus that's designated to bring kids back. Do they get them dropped off here?
Yep, yep, yep. So late bus, I think they pick it up at like four, so could just be conscientious of that. The kiddos get on the bus and I think it gets here over at like four thirty.
Okay.
That's something you just hop on if you need it. Yep, as needed. So, but what, what was their, you know, cause that is a big jump, but was that like, you know, are they still struggling to hire people or are they paying people more and they're picking up more hours? Like, I guess what would be the driving force behind that?
So I don't know if you had recently seen the articles that were in the paper, but they, um, the bus drivers are unionized. Um, and so they're asking for an increase in pay. I know they recently got medical insurance and they're asking for a pension. So when you start looking at all those pieces together, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
That's why.
I did not read any articles, so I was completely unaware. I just didn't know like what was the.
Yeah, it was a month or two ago.
Yeah.
It was in the paper that they were potentially, it was towards the beginning of the year that, that some of the locations might, were considering striking.
Okay.
So, so they're now entering into agreement with them.
Okay.
Would you want to close public comment?
Yes, public comment is closed. It's ten past six. Moving on. Yeah, so, okay.
So the, so the bottom number is, is the same and the percentage increase of point nine five for the year is the same. So I don't know if anybody has any specific questions on any specific lines or.
I, I just want to ask a question because I'm, I'm not a numbers girl. So I wanted me to make sure that I can articulate this, what I'm seeing is what I'm understanding.
Yep.
So our increase is only point nine five percent. Right? That seems very low to me. So I'm saying that out loud so that, to make sure that I'm reading that correctly. That seems very low to me. The last few years, it has not been that low, correct?
Correct. And the reason why it is that low this year is because we have reduced a teacher.
Okay. And that has substantially helped us.
Correct.
Budget-wise.
Because if you look at this, so basically let's round this to a one percent increase, okay? So the cost all in for a teacher with wage, FICA, retirement on all their benefits is usually somewhere between, depending upon where they are on the scale and what medical plan they choose, anywhere from a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty thousand dollar cost for that teacher. So if you think thirty-five is a one, basically a one percent, reducing that teacher has dramatically.
Dramatically changed it, okay.
And then I think too, as they're budgeting, the budgeting has gotten truer with inflation too. So there's not the big swings, because we're kind of holding steady at those higher numbers too, right? So hopefully we'll start swinging the other way slowly. Or, well, I mean, it doesn't need to be slow, right? But you know what I'm saying, right? Like. Swing in the other direction. All right, do we have any other questions on the proposed budget? And so I was just looking at the warrant article in the back here. It looks like our default, um, number is going to be lower.
Yep, and so we put that on the, the next to last page?
Thirty thousand, thirty thousand lower. So we're pretty close for our default with our proposed budget.
So we showed the breakdown on the next to last page.
Oh.
Behind the warrant of your proposed and the default, again, for each function area. And the difference between the default and the proposed is only twenty-seven, seven, ten.
So just again, for my own clarity, if the budget does not pass, we go to our default and we'll only, it will only be a twenty-seven thousand dollar change?
Correct, but you only have a thirty-something thousand dollar increase, so it'll be very similar to your, your current.
Current, but very manageable.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Great job, Michelle.
Thanks. So for the public meeting, we will have, you know, stuff available. We'll work with Brandon in coming up with slides that we can put up and graphs and narratives as to why the changes have happened and things like that for you.
Yeah, and I think, again, seeing just a, a point nine five, a one percent change, that, that narrative needs to be talked about because I, I do think the last couple of years, people have feel burdened, um, with their tax. And it, it just shows that we're, we're trying to be reasonable and work with them. And the default's great. I mean, it's, it's workable.
Cool, so I will be, um, with their help putting the presentation together and anything that you guys would like highlighted, probably next month, we'll discuss. Kind of go over a few things that we'll highlight for the presentation. We can kind of go about it that way.
I mean, sorry, I did wrong. Are you talking next month's public hearing or are you talking deliberative?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm talking about the deliberative.
Yeah, so it's a public hearing, she's.
Yes, you guys are public hearing, sorry.
We'll be working.
At next month's, not public hearing, school board meeting that will happen after, we'll discuss deliberative.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, sorry, keep it separate. I don't want to confuse anyone.
Well, and I will just sit here.
I know what I'm saying, but, right.
We're good, we're good, yes. It, it will all go, it will all go smoothly.
Yep.
Next, I, oh, God, I can wait, I can wait. Keep going, yep.
All right, so if we're all set with the budget, we're gonna move on to approval of minutes. And so the changes that I have is that the identified person is Nancy Parker. And then under Dr. Andriski, uh, it talked about a unanimous decision. And I think we should just add by those in attendance. So it wasn't a unanimous decision of the full board, it was just of those in attendance and, um, minor. And then the, the non-public minutes, I have one change. And that would be the time for non-public commence needs to be changed to six forty. And that's just for the record. But I didn't know if you guys saw anything else. In there. That's all I had.
No.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the public and non-public minutes of November twelfth. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, principals report.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We'll just be, um, quick today.
Okay.
Uh, winter reporting period for semester is amazingly quickly approaching. Um, semester one ends on the seventeenth of January and progress reports, uh, report cards will go home on the thirty-first. Enrollment numbers stayed the same, um, fifteen in kindergarten, eighteen in first grade, twenty-four in second grade, twenty in third grade, ten in fourth grade, twenty-one in fifth, or a total of one oh eight. Our EK community events, our first and second grade, um, students and teachers put on an amazing fundraising event, um, on Friday evening. They worked extremely hard, uh, both staff and students to, um, put on a wonderful evening for our people in our town, vendors who wanted to sell their goods, uh, for a fundraiser for our community engagement project and, um, the, the, we're gonna, we're gonna find a way to recognize our kids at school for their, um, for their just effort in making this their own and, and making it, um, something that they have, uh, developed a passion for of making our school better for them, but also for the people that come behind them. So really proud of them for all their work and we'll update the board on how much we've raised and, um, you know, how we're going to recognize our first and second graders for their efforts.
I have fifteen more dollars for you guys because Mr. Stevens wouldn't take it from Ry because he didn't know where the money came from. But Ry had sold some of her stuff to her grandparents before the fair, so.
I'm gonna comment also when it comes to my goal. Um, I do know the amount.
Yeah, congratulations.
Or, or the, we'll, we'll say we're up to.
The donations are still coming in.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, we're up to, yeah, yeah, yeah. So up to, I, I think we want to keep it open and I have some ideas about that. Um, but I'll, I'll comment on the, on the event when it comes to my goal.
Great. Uh, facilities update, I just wanted to let you know that the multipurpose room heating was repaired on, uh, the fourteenth of November and, uh, it's nice and toasty in there.
Fantastic.
And that's all I have today.
Nice.
I had a follow-up question, Brandon, to our last month's, um, non-public session and if the part of the information that we discussed is now public.
Regarding personnel?
Yes.
Yes, it's public.
Okay. And so I just didn't know if we could share where we are at with that?
Sure. So Mrs. Collins, fifth grade teacher, put in her resignation, um, sent it to Dr. Asbell in HR. Uh, her last day is going to be December twentieth, uh, which is next week. We've, we had multiple options that we felt would work best for our students with one being, you know, the better option. And, um, because of our small class sizes that we currently have right now, uh, it made the most sense for Mrs. Miller, um, senior teacher Mrs. Miller, to absorb, um, the students from Mrs. Collins' classroom to make it one fifth-grade classroom. Uh, we still have, um, we still have, uh, the position posted interviewing this week to, to make it a co-teaching model where we would bring in a long-term sub, hopefully a highly qualified long-term sub, New Hampshire certified, um, to co-teach with Mrs. Miller. Mrs. Miller would be the lead teacher for ELA in math box. And, uh, this other person, this other substitute would, um, be co-teaching with her planning, prepping, pulling small groups, individualized instruction, extension students, students who need some remediation. And they're gonna work side by side together. It made the most sense for our kids. They know Mrs. Miller, they have her currently right now. Uh, she teaches social studies through all of fifth grade. So there's already a relationship she's built with students and parents. And just for the transition purposes for our kids, it just made the most sense that they're all going to CMS together and, um, so, yeah, it's, it's, it's working out really well and, you know, hopefully we can, uh, we can find a highly qualified, a co-teacher today.
How has it been received by the kids and the parents?
Great.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, you know, I, I think, I think, um, because Mrs. Miller's reputation is extremely strong here and because it's, it's gonna be more than likely a regular-sized classroom anyways, it just, it made sense for everyone.
I, I think the, the organic space of them transitioning to CMS, or most of them transitioning to CMS, being in a classroom that has over twenty.
Yeah.
Is, is, is much more realistic for them.
Yeah.
And learning how to navigate that, um, is wonderful, so I, I think the, that space is, is really, really well thought out, so thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks. So it's posted, the job's posted on a website and then off, on a state website too?
It's, yeah, it's posted on the district website, yeah. Um, I forget what the website's actually called, but it's. A job, a job.
Okay, so it is up there now, so people know, okay.
Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you, Brandon.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Brandon? All right, so we are going on to the chairs report, so board committee assignments. So Kirsten, uh, the community engagement committee is not on here. So. Yeah, I, like, you got missed on there and I didn't notice that, so, um, if you.
Yeah, I would like, yeah, let me go first, only because it's, it's a big one.
First on the list, yeah.
Um, so I, I think, you know, to follow up on Brandon's report on the, um, Makers Market, the grades one, two. I first, I also want to recognize the amount of work that our team, our one-two team did with these kids to really create, uh, an experience for them. It wasn't just about the selling and, I mean, it was because it was a fundraiser and I, I asked Mr. Stevens, like, how clearly do they understand, like, this money is going towards the community park? And he said, it's the only reason they wanted to do it. Like, the kids were invested in the idea of having our, our community park and what that meant to them, so, um, the, the spirit of giving was, was huge. These kids were very invested, uh, walking around. Uh, I was at the front greeting everybody, um, trying to explain what the King Fisher Community Park was. We got, I think, don't quote me on the number, but I want to say twelve to fifteen names, uh, to sign up to help. Like, if it was a volunteering day on a Saturday or could they come to a meeting and, and give some, some input? So. could they come to a meeting and, and give some, some input? So it was really well received that this was happening. And then, thirdly, I really want to thank the parents because I think the parents had to invest a lot of time and energy into their kids in doing a lot of this work. There were many parents that were here and it was, it was really a well-received evening and it was really fun to watch the energy in the room. I did receive feedback that there were a few upper elementary kids that were very upset that they weren't involved in it. And so when I spoke to the one-two team, they did say that's feedback for next year, that possibly we could make it a whole school event. I mean, the kids were just beaming with pride, with, like, their, their socialness, please and thank yous, counting money. It was, it was just a great, great experience. So as of, as of tonight, in Still Rising, clearly we have some money that's still coming in.
Still in the back.
Yeah, yeah. We have almost up to twenty-five hundred dollars. So, so, you know, a, a huge round of applause to everyone who was involved in that because it was just so nicely received. And to be able to really, as a board member, to be able to explain what we were doing and to be present. Tiffany showed up. I know you were busy and it's all good, but it was nice to be in it as a full community. It wasn't one group doing something and nobody else was there or vice versa. So, very, very good, very good. I do want to, I do want to talk about, because it came out through an email, about fundraising for this because I think that it's important that we continue it because there was such a momentum going through there. And so there is a QR code that everyone was using that evening and I wanted to throw out there. I, I think even for the, the dollars given, you know, or the two dollars given, having it at the library, having it at maybe Jones or at the town hall where people can continue to really understand that we're trying to build this for not just the school, but for everybody. I, I think it would still be received. So I just wanted to throw that out there. I, I think it would still keep coming in, even in smaller trickles. I mean, I don't expect, I mean, if somebody wants to drop a hundred bucks, you know, fantastic. But, you know, the, the one dollar is having a jar that Zoe can explain at the library what this is for and a QR code, having it, you know, I'd have to obviously speak with Jones's market and, and make sure that they were okay with it. Yes. And then at the town hall or, or, you know, anywhere. I just think it's, it's worth continuing the momentum. So I just wanted to throw that out there and see if there was.
Is there a goal?
There is not a goal, per se. I mean, we haven't talked about that as a committee. I mean, we could throw the five grand goal out there as a way to keep the party going. That might be worth having the challenge.
Talk about in January.
In January, yeah.
My ideas too, like, I mean, I've seen people like, you know, do like a commemorative bench where people could buy, you know, a bench for a certain amount of money or, you know, plant a tree, things like that you could probably do out there that could add to the space but could help raise some money in addition to covering the cost that you would need to before those things, so.
So, yeah, we'll, we'll have our next meeting in January. We do have some more community members coming to that January meeting who are actually skilled in building community parks and outdoor classrooms. So I'm excited to, I've had a couple of conversations with those community members and they're very excited to, to kind of be part of this. And my last comment is, I really, and, and this could be my own thing, it was a diverse demographic. I had high school kids coming up to me on Friday night who were in eighth, ninth, tenth grade, who really wanted to help and give back to East Kingston Elementary. One was in careers in ed at SST and she, she was very excited about, how can I help? Can I get my class involved? We were talking about that. All the way up to retired teachers who were at, who would come into the Makers Market and asking about it. So, again, it, it had a nice feel of community, not just it's our kids doing our market. There were lots of, the demographic was wonderful. So, thank you, Brandon, and thank you to the teachers.
I think if you had a list, like, both of my two daughters came through the school, if you had a list of alumni and sent them the information.
Yep.
I would bet you would get an unbelievable response.
Yep. Do we have that? Can we curate that information?
I don't know how we do it. I, I think we can find out.
I think we could probably find out.
I mean, I'm not on Facebook, but everyone knows. Yearbooks.
Yearbooks and pages.
Start right there.
Yeah.
I mean, some of the kids may or may not be in, you know, still around in the.
Well, I know even some of our parents are alums, right? And so maybe they have the ability to reach out to other people. So, yeah, those are all great ideas. So I didn't want to say that there was an amount. It's up to right now and I, I would love it to be, continue to be open, you know, with you know, if we're allowed to continue that. I think the library is clearly our biggest
Ally.
Ally and community center space. So, yeah, it was fantastic.
Well, thank you, Brandon and Kirsten. I went, I thought it was a great event. I really liked the pamphlet that you made. I took one of those.
That's all Zoe, so let's, I'm gonna give Zoe, yeah.
Okay, well, I mean.
Zoe, Zoe couldn't make it that night because, she had a, another thing that she needed to do with her family and I just, she asked what she could do. I said, just set me up so I can, you know, do stuff because I, I was coming straight from, from school. And she did great. So the pamphlets, the signup sheet, she printed out our grant presentation and then the one-two team did a phenomenal job putting it up on the TV behind me. So I was, I was a little concerned. The first round was, we're gonna give you some iPads, Kirsten, and people could look. I'm like, I want something big and bold behind me and they did it. And so the, the space and the pamphlets, yeah, so Zoe and the team did a great job putting the marketing materials together.
Zoe and the one-two teaching staff.
Yep.
Yeah, I thought it was great because it was very informative as far as, you know, where we've been and where we're going and what we're looking for. And the only thing that I thought about fundraising is, I'm glad we're having this discussion just to make sure the board is aware of, like, how we're looking to, like, raise money, like, you know, QR codes, if they could do a donation right through that. I think that's great information. Just any new changes as far as the fundraising piece that we are aware of it?
East Kingston Community Festival pitch too. It's pretty active, so could post something there as well.
Yeah. Yeah, and then the oh, what else was I gonna say? I just lost my train of thought. So QR code.
Sorry.
That's okay. It will, it will come back to me. Oh, yes. So the minimum amount. So, you know, I just wanted to know, like, I know that we can accept donations of whatever amount, right? But like, you know, some people might look at it as, like, what is a projected cost of this project? You know, like, they want to know sort of like a rough ball house number. I mean, obviously we'll take above and beyond, like, but like, what would it be a minimum to, like, projected minimum to get the project complete that the students could use the classroom? And then obviously anything above and beyond, right? We could add, you know, the different stations and invest more into those types of things.
Yeah, I think one of the things that has been really wonderful, obviously is the PTO's engagement. You know, the cost of this project right now is zero. And, and we're gonna be well on our way come spring, moving forward. So, and now we're, now we're in the, in the plus, right? So we haven't spent a dime on it and I do think, once we work with the, once we work with the community members who have done this as a, you know, and have been through this process to put together a, a budget or some type of structure to see where we, where, what we can choose or not choose or be reasonable with, I, I don't think that's an awful idea, but as of right now, the project has cost zero amount of money and the volunteers, SST and other people are saying, oh, pull a Saturday together, Kirsten, and I'll show up. You know, people are very willing to, to be part of it. I think it's not understanding what, what we need. Once we figure out what we need, I do think the people who did sign up and SST and other folks will, will come out and, and partake.
Awesome.
The first, the first part of the project was to, I think we talked about it in our first meeting, was the trees and clearing out a space. Our PTO has graciously offered, based on their success with the fall fundraiser, to cover the cost of the work to get the ball rolling with clearing out the trees and cut trails and clear out a space for benches and things like that. That, that work is actually gonna be happening this month. The company's gonna come out and get that cleared out. So in the spring, we'll have a great idea on where we're gonna go next year with hopefully SST jumping on board, like you said.
Yeah, we can talk about it. If there, if the crew's coming out, I just want to touch base with you because there are already patches of centers out there that they could quickly remove stuff.
Yeah.
So we get more than one area? Is that in the plan or not?
We, it's in the plan to cut out one large space that's gonna be open.
Okay, yeah.
And then trails going through and cutting down trees.
Okay. Okay. Anyway, all, all good. It was a great night and I look forward to seeing if we can do, sorry, do something again next year, but we need to include the three fives in something because it was very clear. They were disappointed, although they spent a lot of money. So it was good. It's very good.
Very cute.
So thanks for letting me go first.
You're welcome. And then you can go next, you with superintendent evaluation.
Yep. So we will be meeting, we haven't met since our last meeting. And our next meeting, we will be live meeting, going through, getting the data from that space, I think. And then I want to say, as we work through, May will be the last where we have our, we do a big data dive on the self-reflection and we'll be our chair will be working with Dr. Asbell and, and then we'll be saying goodbye and starting for our next, our round with Dr. Andruski on his goals and what he wants to do. So nothing's really new happening with that. So.
Okay. All right, we're gonna stick with Kirsten and go to wellness.
We're meeting on, we're, we're meeting, we're meeting on Thursday, which is also a live meeting. It's not Zoom because we're working in small groups. Again, continuing trying to build a toolbox for everybody. And so I think that meeting's in late afternoon, so hopefully I can get there for at least a little bit of it, coming out of school. So that's it. We'll meet Thursday and I'll have an update of what we did when we meet in January.
Nice. All right, before we do policy, Paul, do you want to do safety and security and then strategic planning after?
Yep.
Okay, cool.
So no, nothing to report on safety and security. We, as I said with Kirsten, we haven't met since our last meeting. We're not scheduled to meet again until February thirteenth, so that's the only real update there. For strategic planning, there was a meeting held on December twenty first. I was unavailable for that meeting, but Esther, sorry, November twenty first, excuse me. Thank you. But Esther did send an email around following that. The survey that is going out to community members, parents, students, teachers in February, or March I should say, is, has been finalized. The vendor that we're working with is gonna be distributing that survey, just making some adjustments based on the feedback that we have to get that in a final good spot. Currently, right now, what Esther has asked us to do is just reach out to the respective, either newspapers or community channels in our towns to find out if there's any sort of deadlines or dates or anything that we need to sort of get them information so that they can actually promote the survey. I think the library, again, is probably gonna be our best bet. Obviously Jones's, so I think we're gonna tap those local community centers here in East Kingston to get that, get that out there. So again, I don't think we're gonna have any deadlines that we need to work with. It's not like we're working with a newspaper advertising it. So I think we'll be in okay shape. So next meeting is gonna be next Thursday and I'll report back to Esther my thoughts on how we can get this out. So.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
All right, so we're gonna move on to policy committee. Let's stick with the backwards theme tonight. So we've got policies to withdraw, which would be GBGDR, and this is an obsolete form at this point. That was a temporary alternative duty program acknowledgement form, so we no longer need that form. Policy code GCCBC, Family Medical Leave Act, FMLA. This is a revision, review. Revisions to GBCC reflect a provision found in House Bill four of two thousand nineteen, which expanded FMLA benefits to employees in New Hampshire by reducing the number of required annual hours to qualify from twelve fifty to nine hundred and also removed the threshold number of employees formerly fifty. The result is that most paraprofessionals and other full-day school year employees qualify. This policy was also revised to ensure a better flow of information. Policy GBEC, drug-free workplace and drug-free schools, review, revision, a small revision to add the federal requirements that reports by employees of a work-related drug conviction be made in writing. Policy EBBB, accident reporting. This is a review, revision. We revise this policy to reflect requirements imposed by the two thousand nineteen passage of House Bill four oh six on all employees, all employers to report workplace accidents involving death and serious injury. Policy code GBAM, accommodations of pregnancy and related medical conditions personnel. This is a new policy. So the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission's final regulation to carry out the Pregnant Workers Fairness Act, PWFA, went into effect on June eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four. So it's a new policy. And then policy code ACN, accommodation of lactation needs. This is a new policy too. Both the state legislature and Congress, respectively, House Bill three fifty-eight and the Providing Urgent Maternal Protections Pump for Nursing Mothers Act passed laws mandating, without, with limited exceptions, accommodations in the workplace for employees who have lactation or lactation-related needs. I didn't know if you had any questions about some of the policies. I am going to be making a recommendation tonight to change our policy, the ACN, the one that I spoke about last, accommodation of lactation needs. So this is a new policy. And at the policy meeting, I had suggested, you know, to the group that my changes, and there were two objections to that. Usually how the policy meeting works is if there are objection, if, if you're fine with it, you kind of generally don't say anything and then the objections come up. So I wanted to bring it back to you guys because we can have a different, our policy can look a little different. For example, this policy, ACN, accommodation of lactation needs, will look different for the cooperative school board because this covers employees who are, you know, nursing or pumping. Their policy will include students. So, you know, each policy, each school can have a little, I guess, a change in a policy, right? Yes. And so in that policy, let's pull that up. So I have an extra one. She, Heather does a great job printing out the policies that we go over. So she gave me, this is an extra one here. So my changes for accommodations of lactation needs, ACN, would be slash nursing mothers included into that accommodation of nursing, of lactation needs. And then the other change would be under collectively on that first line on A. I should have given you this one. It will say nursing mothers and people with lactation or lactation-related needs. So that would be the change that, so to include the verbiage nursing mothers. And then another thing that I should read is the New Hampshire School Boards Association is the one who writes up a lot of our policy and revises them after our House Bills get passed. We do, as board members too, cross-reference, but as the term nursing mother does not capture all individuals who are protected by these laws, even though it headlines one federal law and likely describes a majority of employees and students covered by this policy. So what it's recognizing is, is that they made the decision to refer to everyone as lactation or people with lactation or lactation-related needs. So I'm looking to include those people, but also to include, like, nursing mothers.
But doesn't it already include nursing mothers?
Well.
Like, that's it, that's the umbrella. It is including it.
Technically, it would be.
Yeah.
But like the definition, um, I mean, my thought is that it should be adding because you're excluding a majority gender of the people that would be, you know, looking at this policy. You're, you know, you're.
I guess I was, uh, what, just the, just using, being in the, saying lactation immediately says to me nursing mothers. Right? Right? So I don't need to add the word there. And they're they're trying to be inclusive by saying it's just anyone who need, has that need, right? So I've already, that's my first go-to. So I'm okay without it having there because that's where my brain went to immediately. Um, I don't, I don't.
Yeah, in my, in my brain, I feel like if I, you know, I wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't be looking at myself as lactation needs. I'd be looking at myself as a nursing mother, um, as an employee.
So, so as an employee, my role or as an employee or my role is to provide a space where that can happen, and that's just lactation needs. If someone comes with a doctor's note and says I have lactation needs, my job is to make sure that I have that space provided. Not that I am saying it's, it is for a nursing mother, right? But my only role is to provide that space for them and the ability for them to do that. So I think it in, already includes nursing mothers. So I hear, I I hear what you're saying because it it is. It's nursing moms, right?
Right.
Um, and.
And people who with lactation or lactation needs.
Yeah, my concern is adding, so CM, so my, I guess it's not about us and our policy because I I don't, I don't think we need to add it for that reason, but the students. If we have to create lactation, um, spaces for students, that should not be with employees. So they're not, so.
Particularly it's a room that's available.
Right, but if I have an, I have an employee who has lactation needs and then I also have a student who has lactation needs, that is not the same room. I'm just saying.
I mean, technically, technically speaking, there's nothing in the law that would say otherwise, like that.
Right.
Well, that would say that they had to be separate rooms, um, other than, you know, the specifics that are written in this policy. Depending on the space, there may or may not be two separate spaces. Yeah, so, um.
So that would be my only question to the committee. Like, if, you know, I'm at the high school and those needs may occur. The privacy of the employee and the privacy of the student, um, I think is really important. And so my only question would be, would it be provided that there were two separate ones or is there a way that not policy-wide, but procedure-wise, would they be scheduling around that, right? I don't think a student would, nor an employee. So that's my only question. But according to what you're saying, I already, I I already think it includes nursing mothers tip. So I don't, I hear what you're saying.
In favor of keeping the policy, the verbiage is same.
But that's, but that's.
Okay.
You're including them as it should be.
Yes. Um, and the other thing that I wanted to mention too on this same policy, there was a lot of stuff on this same policy, is that in there's no exclusions for breastfeeding written into this policy. So what that means, like as far as a building level principal, um, situation is that where there's no exclusions for that and I'm fine for that with that, that, you know, a teacher could essentially, you know, have their caregiver bring the baby in and spend that half an hour with the baby versus pumping. And so that's not an exclusion in here. Um, the federal policy and the state policy, you know, one has it and one does not, but either way, like, it's a local thing. So I just wanted to put that out there, that that's not in this policy and just let you know because it could, you know, if you're reading this policy, it's really, it's not written in here. So just wanted to let you know.
So is it possible that someone could bring the child, the the new child to the school and the teacher could use that time to feed the baby? That's a possibility. That's all I'm saying. Not that that's ever happened.
If it's not in the policy, then it's a possibility.
It's a possibility, right?
Yeah. And I mean, I'm fine with it not being an exclusion for certain circumstances. I mean, I think it would be left up to Brendan's discretion and I'm really happy that we're in fact talking about this because I think, I mean, the fact that it's 2024 and this isn't a policy, you know.
So, right, so I think the determination here is the policy, the policy as it stands is open to, we need to provide a lactation area for people for when they need it, right? Procedure-wise, what that would look like. That would go to local and Brandon and a crew would have to.
Yeah, well, it's.
Create that.
It's required. It's required by law to have A through F here.
Okay.
Um, this is the minimum. This is in law. Uh, electrical outlet, appropriate seating, uh, surface sufficient to place a breast pump, a sink with running water, or be in a reasonable proximity to one, a refrigerator for milk storage, or be in a reasonable proximity to one and shall be cleaned regularly by the district staff assigned to that duty. And then it also would be, um, it may be temporary or permanent, the space, because it should be set up for a certain length of time while the employee needs it and shall be shielded from view and free from intrusion by other persons included, including without limitation by other staff or students. And.
That takes care of my other issue.
Yes. And where was the? I don't know why I'm not seeing. Oh, you know why? Because, um, this is the unedited version of that policy. So in, no, that's unedited too. So in the new policy, um, we added, uh, so it should be locked. So like, once you're in that space, right? Because. It's a lockable door. Yep, there you go. Perfect way to explain that. Yep.
Yep.
Yep. So that is added on there too. So. Um, okay, so we are all good with those policies?
I am, because I I think the next step would be moving to within, within-house, creating procedures that allow for that to happen within the building itself.
We have that.
Yeah.
We're good.
Yeah, awesome. Thank you. Perfect. Okay, so let me go to these. So I'll make a motion to approve policy ACN, policy GBAM, policy EBBB, policy GBEC, policy GCCBC, and to withdraw policy GBGDR. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? All righty. Let's find my agenda here. What's going on? All right. So we're gonna move on to board goals. Uh, goal number one, uh, I do not have any updates. Um, great presentation last month. Moving on, goal number two, Kirsten.
Yeah, I just gave a huge dissertation about community engagement, so I'm good.
Goal number three.
Um, I mean, Brandon had shared an update on the heating exchange. And I think the only other update, if we have one, is just where we sort of stand with any of the outstanding bids we're waiting on for the project, uh, for the IT room, we'll call it.
Yep.
I know it's more kind of safety and security, but I think it does fall under, obviously.
So I think that's still a non-public and we'd have to wait till Renee's back next month to give an update on that.
All righty. So the only other thing under new business that I wanted to cover real quick is, uh, so right now, every two weeks I get the current financials, uh, emailed to me in a very in-depth, um, kind of like what you see in here that we're signing every week. Uh, and it usually goes, I look through it and then approve it and it goes back to the financial office. And so as I get ready to leave the board and we get a new member, I just want to put that out there as far as like, one of you could take that over if you wanted to, or you could just assign it right away, um, to the new board member.
Oh, the rookie?
I'm just thinking, like, so we don't like miss a beat because I don't know when the dates are of the election and and such, but you know what I'm saying? Just, I just wanted to put that out there as far as that is another responsibility that you could think about if you wanted or not. And things still happen, you know, it's just, it's good because you can, uh, request a certain invoice, right, to be able to see everything more granularly. Yeah. All right. So non-public, I do not believe we have to go into non-public. Do you guys have any newer old business? Anything else you want to discuss?
Brandon, should I wait until Renee's back for the non-public thing that I wanted to bring up?
Yeah.
Are you sure?
She, she, she wanted to make sure anything non-public that she was here.
Well, technically, we don't need Renee to go into non-public because we're the governing body, us three. So if you feel that you need to go in non-public to discuss discuss something with Kirsten and I real quick, we can go into non-public and come out and still have further conversation. Later, yep.
Yeah, I I think I should share the update because there was kind of a.
Okay. So, so what, um, what would you like to go under non-public, under?
I think it probably falls under the same RSA that we've been under with, um.
With a C?
Yeah.
So C, let me just, um, let me just confirm. So we, uh, consideration of matters relating to the preparation for and carrying out of emergency functions, including training to carry out such functions. Um, all right, here. Those are, the highlighted ones are the ones we went under last month.
It's either gonna be A or E, I would think.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to go on into non-public at 6:56 under 91, or say 91, A, three, what were the letters again? A?
A.
Yeah, three, A, yeah. Or E.
A and E. Uh, rule call vote, Tiffany?
Kirsten.
The time is now 7:05. We are out of non-public session. Uh, meeting adjourned. Thank you.